Welcome to Politics Not Included, where we get to know the person, not their policy. We're creating a space to have real conversations with your elected officials and election candidates to get to know them as a person first. We're hoping these conversations will make it easier to approach and engage your local leadership. Now, before we get started with today's episode, I have a couple of ground rules to cover as always. The first is, Politics Not Included is hosted by the Transparent Campaign Initiative. And in the spirit of transparency, these episodes will be published without being edited. And we're doing this to keep this platform neutral and authentic to all of the guests that we have on the show. Now, what that means for you as a listener, or a viewer if you're on our YouTube channel, is that you may witness or hear longer pauses than anticipated, or some bloopers, or stumbling over words. And that's because you're watching or listening to this conversation as if it were live. You're hearing the whole thing in its entirety. And I'm excited to get to share these conversations with you in a true and authentic form. And that leads me to rule number two. That as you're watching or listening to this, if you have any comments that creep up in your head that if you were sitting in this room with us, you may not have the confidence to say to our face, or you may not feel like the best human being if you did, I'm going to ask you to keep that in your head and out of the comments. And that's because we're just trying to have conversations to get to strengthen our community and to build each other up, rather than tear each other down. And in order to do that, I think we need to keep the comments kind. Now that all of that is out of the way, let's get this show started. Just one note before we get started with today's episode. All Wichita City Council candidates have been invited as a guest to appear on Politics Not Included. On today's episode, we welcome Lawanda Deschaser. She is a community engagement specialist and is currently a candidate for the Wichita City Council election taking place this November. Lawanda, welcome to Politics Not Included.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here. Thank you.
I'm really excited to get to know you. Thank you for taking the time to be here. I know that we're in the full swing of your campaign and coming up on November. And so I know that you have a very busy schedule. And I appreciate you taking the time to have this discussion with me. I am looking forward to diving into some of your backgrounds and where you've been and how those experiences have led you to want to run for Wichita City Council. So can you take us kind of back to the beginning? Are you originally from Wichita?
Right, so my dad was at McConnell Air Force Base, serving his duty to the country. And he met my mom here in Wichita. So yeah, you know, they get married, have me. And so this is where it all began.
Do you have siblings?
I do. I have two sisters and three brothers. And so my dad, you know, lives in Detroit. So you know, of course, I spent a little time there, but this is.
That's great. Big family. That's wonderful. And you have a Bachelor's of Science in Human Resource Management. What about human resource management drew you to that major and wanting to pursue that area of study?
Right. So because I've always been interested in people, I've always had this innate ability to like read people, to understand people. And so I just thought that human resources was the way to go. And I know that in any business, anything you do, it's all about the people. And so I just wanted to hone in on that and get more tools in the tool belt.
And from there, did you go directly into pursuing your MBA? Or did you take some time off in between?
So to be honest, the very beginning of my college experience, I really was going into accounting. I just knew I was going to be a CPA. I just knew it from a little girl. I just knew it. And so I did enroll at Wichita State University. But it just wasn't a good fit for me at that time. The classes were humongous, but not just that. It was boring. Math became boring. I'm like, maybe I'm not equipped to sit in a room all day and count numbers. And so I had to gravitate differently. And so my second love, of course, was people. And so human resources just makes sense.
Yeah, people are much more entertaining and enjoyable than numbers, in my opinion. So that makes perfect sense. And then after you have your MBA, what did you do to start your career?
Right. So really, after I got the degree in human resources, I did segue right into the MBA. But I was working with Cedric County at the time. And so the county manager would pick certain employees to go through the mini MPA program at WSU, which is the public service program, right? And so I was selected to go. And so I used that to determine whether I wanted a MPA or MBA. And business won out, right? So that just really helped me again to just understand how business works and how do the people fit into business? Or maybe how does business fit into helping people? And so it was just a natural progression for me to get that MBA.
It does seem like as I was looking into some of your background and experiences, your career trajectory has really been community oriented. And so it seems like the community is really important to you. And then maybe you have found that the accounting and that side of it maybe is a way to serve the community? Is that kind of a common thread in your career?
Right. And so I actually was lucky because numbers has always been a part of my life, which I knew it would be. And in a different aspect. And so I started off my community service work with my son's football organization, Wichita Golden Bulldogs. And so you know, you're a team mom first, and then you kind of progress your way up. I started working with the cheerleaders. I gave myself the title, became business manager for the organization. So numbers have always been there. And so the business, the people side, and then working with a little league football organization, it made me understand that we fundraised all the time because there were people that could not afford to pay their dues, the fees for their kids to play, right? And our motto was, nobody was going to be left out because they couldn't pay. So the numbers always were there. Like, how do I get resources to help families? How do I get money to help? And so it just taught me that if somebody couldn't pay their football fees, that meant they probably couldn't pay an electric bill or they probably, there was something else going on. And so the something else going on motivated me all the more to learn about what resources that Wichita have. Where can people go to get help? And again, I just started learning these things, learning these things. And I knew how to help our citizens.
That's a really interesting path to get involved. And it's very natural, right? Your son's playing football and this is the way that you feel like you can help and get involved. And things have grown from there. You've highlighted different things in your experience in the community, like hosting different workshops and community engagement for different programs. Can you talk a little bit about those things? And some things that you've done a little bit more recently?
Yeah. So as I got more involved, I joined the Wichita branch NAACP. And somehow I ended up over the youth and I became the youth advisor. And it seemed like I was always put in a position to work with kids. And so with that role, it was all about how do we empower kids to use their voices in a meaningful way? You know, it was great to have a protest, it's great to have a march, but then it was always the what next? And so I wanted to give them the what next. And so we went to Topeka. They were able to talk to our state representatives about things that mattered to them. And we attended all sorts of workshops. And like you say, I put on workshops. I wanted to expose them to different career paths. We had TV personalities come out. State Senator Alita Fosca Doe came out. And so again, just finding people in the community that could speak the language to the kiddos to make them want to aspire to do something with their lives. And so plenty of workshops, I put on workshops for adults as well. You know, when we first started hearing about flock cameras and you know, license tag readers, I wanted citizens to understand what that meant. And so I did organize a workshop to bring the police chief in. Well, it might not have been the police chief. It was the department over the data. And they came in and really talked us through step by step how the system would work. So again, I always tried to find things that were happening in our communities and find a way to make sure people understood what was going on.
Do you feel like you enjoy both working with kids and adults as much? Or do you kind of prefer, find yourself leaning towards younger, the younger demographic? Or you have.
To be honest, even when, so I retired from Cedric County in 2019. After 20 years, you know, I did work in the fire district and I handled, you know, budgets. Again, the money was always there. From 14 to $20 million budgets. And then also in that space of time, I was a lone officer with United Way. And again, it gave me an opportunity to learn different things. And so along the way, again, gravitated towards kids. But I want people to know that I work with adults just as well. Because I've learned that you have to help people in a holistic way. So it's not just enough to say I want to help kids. We have to help families because that's how you really affect change. And so working with adults and youth, I get just as much joy in either space.
And you retired from the county. And then looking into what you're doing now, it seems like you shifted from that to some really community oriented roles. What led to that shift and what are you doing now?
So when I left the county, I'm too young to actually retire. I always wanted to be a school teacher. So I became a substitute school teacher, right? And then the next job, full-time job that I had was with the Wichita Collective Impact. And that was a program Cargill here in town donated $2 million. And the goal was to how do we increase third grade learning achievements? Focus on, you know, math and read. If you can't do math or read by third grade level, third grade statistically, you're done. So I got that job, right? And so they hired me on to me the, again, the program manager. It was, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah. So I had the opportunity to take a program on paper and make it into something. And so I was able to bring in 65, about 65 different nonprofits. And we all had the one focused goal on how do we increase third grade reading literacy achievements? And so again, found myself working with kids, but you had to have a holistic approach. So I brought in resources, bought in resources. We ran the summer of 2022, 23 and 24. I came in 2022, so 23 and 24. We actually ran summer camps, had teachers from USD 259 come in. And we taught things to the students so that they could increase their learning, but at the same time, not lose what they had already learned the year before, right? But the cool part of it was that I introduced them to things they had not really experienced, like going to the art museum, going to botanical gardens, you know, looking at butterfly exhibits. So I was able to bring in resources and still give them other tools in a way that they didn't know they were still learning. So the collective impact was for two years. And then in that two years, working with other nonprofits, I realized I needed to get my own nonprofit off the ground. And so 2023, Communities in Action happened. I have my own nonprofit and it's still the same focus. How do we help people?
That's incredible. And when you're starting that journey, trying to get everybody to come together, what's the biggest challenge in getting people to come together to take something from a piece of paper to something that's actually actionable and making an impact?
So we had to have the common goal. So one of the first things I did, I went and knocked on the doors of all these nonprofits. I want to see what were they doing and were they successful? And so then I just said, you know what? There's a new program that's happening and I know you care about children. I know you care about literacy and let's come to the table together. And so we all had this buy-in on how do we make the community better? And what better way than to start off with our children? And so, but I really stressed that although you were coming to the table, you were still who you were. You were, you still represented your own nonprofit, your own business. You didn't have to give your identity to help with this overreaching goal. And I think that was the thing that fascinated these different organizations. They didn't lose their identity. They brought their strength to the table. And that's, that's what we do in everything. Let people know we could all work together. We don't have to be one gigantic name, but we could have one gigantic goal.
That's beautiful. And so your nonprofit Communities in Action, is that continuing that work or is that something different? What are you doing with that?
It is continuing the work. So from the youth organization, the football organization, we brought that underneath our umbrella, myself and my brother Coach Pops. And so we brought the football under us and then also the cheerleaders. And so our girls, sometimes people forget about the girls in our community. And so I had started a cheer competition, a friendly cheer competition. So that's still, this is year seven, that will happen. And so brought that under the umbrella of the nonprofit. I also do a community made called Music in the Park. Again, year seven, I don't know, something about that year seven when I first started. Yes, complete number. And so again, you know, you go to bigger cities and there's always good things happening. And I wanted to make sure that we can do those things here in Wichita. So I do a Music in the Park event. It's adult oriented, but you can definitely bring the entire family. So yes, continuing the work of serving the community.
And then you've talked a little bit about why serving the community is important to you. What does a day in a life look like for you? A normal day, it sounds like you're juggling a lot of things, which is all great work that you're doing. What's a normal day look like for you?
A normal day, so you know, I'm in the middle of a campaign. So my days are, have shifted a little bit. So like today, I still have to work. I'm not independently wealthy. So I went to work this morning. I left my job. I went to a meeting at the, hosted by the Urban League to talk about the state of different issues. I leave that meeting, I went to another meeting hosted by ACLU. I leave the ACLU meeting, I go to another meeting talking about the economic situation of the state of Kansas. And so that's my life. We have cheerleading practice tomorrow evening. So if this was Wednesday, I'd be going to a cheer meeting. I would be going over to the football field, make sure everything's good over there. The day of my life. And I have another job, we didn't really talk about, and it's a community oriented as well. Every Friday from 3:30 to 4:30, I'm at our juvenile detention facility teaching life skills to teenage boys and girls. On Wednesdays, before cheerleading practice, I'm at another private school doing the same thing, teaching life skills. So a day of my life starts at 4:00 AM and it probably won't end until about 8:00 PM. And it's all community oriented.
You mentioned you have a son. Is, how old is he? Is he, are you still going to football practices or?
No. And that's the beauty of it. So when my son, my son is 27. So when my son aged out, that was my, I still found that was my happy place. The football organization was where I got my strength. And it allowed me to serve others, right? And so I stayed with the organization. That's why I said, we're still with them to this day. I found life there.
That's great. Yeah, it sounds like that kind of sparked some things in you and it's great that you're still involved in those things. And you mentioned you're one of five siblings, right?
Well, my mom has six kids, yes.
Okay. How, you know, how's the, do you have family around this area? You know, are you still, like, are they supportive of your campaign? How's your family support you in this stuff?
The five of us still live here in Wichita. And I have a younger sister that lives in Vegas. And whenever she can come home, she does. If there's a big event, she'll fly home to support. My siblings are here. And without my family's support, I actually have a very large family. My mom's family is here. And so I have lots of cousins and aunts and uncles. And honestly, this has been a family affair. Without my family, I would not, it would be difficult without my family. So I do have their support. I have to get on them sometimes, like, okay, I need a little bit more support. This is a running for office, you never stop. And so without my family, I would be lost.
That's incredible. The support system is huge. And having people around that you can lean on is really a beautiful and important thing for what you're doing. It does take a lot and ask a lot of you.
Very important, yes.
And so what ultimately led you to not to run for city council?
So I have, I have my own mentors, right? You know, I have plenty of mentees, but I've got mentors along the way. Senator Alita Fosca Doe and Representative Gail Finney, my heroes. And so some, I saw the fights, especially here in Wichita, when we had the big fight over the 125-foot electrical poles that were put in neighborhoods of residence. And Gail Finney really fought to make sure that that didn't happen again. So I'm already involved in our community. I'm already seeing resources, right? Learning about those. I see how some communities have felt forgotten. You know, when you wake up in the morning and see a 125-foot electrical pole in your front yard, it made the citizens feel a little disrespected. So I started thinking, how can I help bring back dignity? How can I hope to make people feel like they're not forgotten? And what better place to go than where the resources are? And what better place than local, right here in Wichita? And so city council was a natural progression. I really thought about the school board because I thought I could be effective there as well. But then when I waited out, I figured out to be the most effective, I need to be where the most resources are. And so I said, let's go for city council.
That's great. It is, it's really, you know, I've talked to a lot of people that are running a campaign and running a campaign maybe for the first time. And it is really admirable to see something that you want to change and want to be involved in and go and do this. It's, it's so, props to you and to everybody else that's running. It's, it's a great thing to want to pursue. And is this your first time running a campaign?
This is my first time running the campaign. I've helped others, I've knocked doors, I've made phone calls. I've helped so many others along the way. But once I'm in my own campaign, it's a whole different ballgame. It's so different. But I'm glad that I did help others in the past to at least give me a little bit of insight into what it looks like. And so, but yeah, this is my first campaign.
Yeah. So can you share a little bit about what it's like to run a campaign for the first time? And some hurdles? I mean, it seems on its surface like an easy concept. You know, you just have to get your name in front of people. But it's really complex and what that experience is like and how you're navigating getting a campaign going and movement behind it.
It is very complex. And what I would tell people first off, because I am not independently wealthy and we know that a lot of politicians are. And so I really had to take a good look at my finances to see what, what could I give up in order to run an effective campaign? Because you have to be present. And so I would tell people, make sure that you can be present. And so check your finances, make sure you can afford to run. Because you can't go to work every day. You just can't. And so, and also, wait out friendships, right? And not everybody, people may like you, but that doesn't mean they want to vote for you. And so be prepared for some shockers. I've had a couple of shockers, like, okay, I thought we were at a different place, but we're at a different place. And so I want people to understand that, to not take it personal. Because I had, that was a hurdle for me to not take it personal that people I've worked with over the years consistently, I'm not their candidate, right? And so I had to reconcile with that. And then I also, you know, lessons we learn early on. We do things for people because we want to, not because we expect something back. And I had to keep telling myself, don't expect anything back. Every vote that I get, I'm going to earn it, right? I'm not taking anything for granted. So I want people to understand that too. Have a thick, have some thick skin when you put your name in the hat. And then also remember, this is a 24, 24/7 job, running for an office. My dad told me, Lawanda, you're always politicking. So remember, what you do out in the public matters. What you say matters. Don't, and be yourself because people know when you're being fake. And so I had to remember to be myself, not try to be in a mold. For those that I knew are not going to vote for me, don't change yourself for those people because the people you're running for, the people you're wanting to represent, they will vote at the polls and they will say, that's the genuine person that I put my name on the line for. So I would just encourage everybody to be yourself. Check your finances.
Yeah. But it's interesting you bring up, and I haven't thought about it from this perspective, but that somebody you've been around for years and years and you just assume like, yeah, we're friends, you would vote for me. And then you're like, oh, okay, that person isn't going to vote for me. That's just a really, yeah, it must take you back and.
It does, it does. And so that's why I want to let people know in advance, it's going to happen. And it was a little hurtful, to be honest. But then you have to put yourself back into the game and say, this is politics, right? And you have to say, why are you running? And the ones that you know will vote for you, you just have to realize they have a different perspective. They want something different out of the election than what you're, what you're wanting. So again, it's personal, not personal. And so just be prepared for that. And like I say, it was a learning lesson for me, but it was a good learning lesson. It was a good lesson. Because once I, look, once I get in that seat, everybody's not going to like me. There's going to be things written about me that may or may not be true. And so this is getting me ready for that next step. So I thank everybody that didn't just give me their vote right away. Thank you.
I love that perspective of you, you're taking that as a learning opportunity and something that you build on, that will prepare you for the future. That's a really great outlook to have on, on everything. And your district was the only district in Wichita that had a primary election, right?
We had five people in the race. I was like, whoa.
Yeah. What was that experience like going through a primary and overcoming that hurdle and now looking down the runway at the general election?
So I actually failed to run, I believe, like March or early 2024. So I knew I was going to run. And my goal was to let everybody know that this is what I'm doing, right? And so most of the other candidates came on late in the game. You know, I think one person fell, you had to what, foul by noon on that last day? And that person fouled by noon that last day or day before. And so it was interesting to see that there were five candidates and we all bought different perspectives. And so it was interesting. I had a conversation with most of them that said that if they didn't get over the hurdle, they would support me and vice versa. And so that night of the primary, I don't drink, I don't do drugs. I'm a very sober minded person. Well, I'm going to tell you, that night I was like, do I drink?
I need to get thirsty.
It was so nerve wracking to know that you put in so much work and it could have ended that night. And then when it didn't, and I got moved forward, I didn't cry, but I almost did. I had to tell myself, there's no playing in politics.
I I probably would have shed a tear. That's it's a lot of work you put into it. And in that moment, the decision is made, there's there's no going back. You can't oh, what if, what if we did this? That's the decision we made before. That's a moment.
That was a moment. And so um I enjoyed that moment for two days. Um, I had to rest. And so after the second day, I said, okay, time to get back to work. It's kind of like going to the Super Bowl. As I've mentioned, I love football. That's why I'm still hanging out with the kiddos. And you know, when you win the ASC championship, you're happy, you're shouting, we're going to the championship. And then you remember, there's one more game. I have one more game to play. And so I'm preparing every day for the big game.
You gotta keep your eye eye on the prize. And so in twenty twenty-three, in District One, about fourteen percent of registered registered voted, wow, registered voters cast a ballot. So fourteen percent of people are participating and making this decision for the previous election. Why do you think that participation in local elections is as low as it is? And what would you say to people that don't vote? Like, why should you go to the polls?
I've actually been having those conversations. And I really think it gets to lack of trust. People just don't trust politicians anymore. They think their vote doesn't count. And they think most politicians are crooks. And so when I I've had these real conversations and so I've been trying to find a way to connect the voter to the issues, like what's important to you? And so when they tell me, oh, you know, schools and that's and I have to tell, although I'm not running for a school board position, I really want our city and our school boards to work together. And so I get their issues, just like when when Bernie Sanders was running, he talked about the things that mattered to the voters, like especially young voters, free education, um, things like that. And so I really try to find a way to connect. And what um one thing that has been resonating with with and and really been focusing on young voters, because the older voters are gonna vote, right? Statistically, they'll vote. And so I could lay out my plan. They understand my education level. They understand the things that I've been doing. They they know that I bring experience to the table, period. I am the most experienced person running and they get that. But my younger voters, the ones that don't vote, eh, nothing in it for me. When I find out what their interests are, I said, you know what? The city has a program for that. Um, you're entrepreneur, you have a small business? The city has a program where they can help fund your your small business. Um, you're a senior and you know, the senior senior that can't get out the house. And you know what? I'm not gonna vote anymore. Did you know there's funds for seniors to maybe get your tree limbs cut or or things like that? So I've been really doing my homework to find all the different programs the city has. So that when I talk to anybody, I can explain what's in it for them.
That's a great approach. Find the reason, get people to the the polls. It's so important to vote in these elections and you know, I wish more people did. And so at this point, you're you're in your campaign, you're in the heart of it. What's one thing that you wish more people knew about running for an elected position? So like speaking to the general public, which what's one thing you wish more people understood about what you're trying to do?
Okay, so although I have a lot of support, I've been knocking doors and people will vote for me. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an exciting November for us. But everybody that has pledged to vote for me doesn't understand that it takes finances to run a campaign. And so some people don't understand the value of making a donation. Um, but statistically, if you make a donation, you're gonna vote.
Yeah, because you're invested in it.
We're invested in it. And so I want people to be invested. And so if you just donate five dollars, you know, or or just donate something to the candidate of your choice to help make sure your candidate gets over that last hurdle. Um, and then also make a plan to vote. You know, we all say, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna wait because I want to vote the day of. And the day of, oh man, my car broke down. Oh man, I had to work from seven to seven. Oh man. Make a plan to vote. So I'm gonna tell everybody, make a plan whether you're on on either side, make a plan to vote so that your vote does count. The the best your, the vote you're investing in will actually count.
Yeah, that's great. In my last question, and then I'll jump into a series of three questions that I ask everybody. What is one thing you want people to know about you as a person before they go to the polls this November?
I want people to know that I am experienced. We see what's going on on federal level, state level and and even local level. We need experience in those seats right now to be able to talk the the talk and and walk the walk and know the language of of what it takes to make sure all of our citizens are are, right? I'm experienced. I've worked for Cedric County Fire District for twenty years. I've handled budgets from fourteen to twenty million dollars. I get it, but also I have compassion. I love people. And I know District One is so diverse. We we have three, four hundred thousand dollars in district homes in District One. And we have other homes that may be valued at forty thousand dollars, very diverse. And I want people to understand, I've done the research in all the different areas. And I understand that each area has a different need. I'm not a one trick pony. I get it. And so I want people to know that I'm invested in all of District One. And I really do have a love for the historically black district that has been overlooked and and undervalued. And so I tell people, when we do things for the least of us, it makes the rest of us better. And so I'm gonna make the least of us better so that all of us are better and and they can trust me and to that I will be a woman of my word.
Thank you. And so last three questions that I ask everybody at the end of every interview. Do you remember the first time you voted?
I do. I don't know who I voted for. I graduated from high school at seventeen. So then when I turned eighteen, I did go register to vote. I don't remember who I voted for, but I do know Bill Clinton, that era was my era of of getting involved and learning who's who and what's what. So Bill Clinton is my first real thought of paying attention to politics.
And what was that experience like? Did you, were you looking forward to voting or were you just kind of indifferent? Like, do you remember?
I was excited to vote. Uh, my mom and dad instilled in me something about, um, let's say my dad was in the military. So I know what it's like to wanna uplift our country and and it's your civic duty to go vote. I still trying to do my other civic duty to be on the jury, but that hasn't happened yet. But it's our duty to go vote and I was, I couldn't wait to be a page to go vote.
And why is voting important to you?
The only way to affect change, honestly, the only way is through our our political system. I talked about resources that you get to help decide where where the funds go, what do we invest in? What do we want our city to be like? How do we make our city grow? And so you have to be at the table to help make those things happen. And so I am super excited about this journey that I am on, that I can help people on a bigger scale platform.
And how can people find or connect with you?
Uh, I'm all over social media. You can just find Lawanda Duchesner on Facebook. You can find me on Instagram. You can find me on LinkedIn. Um, uh, you can go to info um at, look, I forgot my website. Uh, you're not go to vote uh vote Duchesner dot org. And that's where you can find my my website. You can sign up to volunteer. You can make a donation. Whatever you want to do to learn more about me in or to get involved, yeah, just go to vote Duchesner uh dot com.
Great. And I will leave us with, you can follow us on our social media pages for announcements for new episodes. On Instagram, you can follow us at Transparent Campaigns or the podcast at Politics Not Included. Our Facebook is Transparent Campaign Initiative. And for more information on the upcoming election for Wichita City Council, you can visit our website at transparentcampaigns.org. Lawanda, thank you so much for joining us today. It really was a pleasure to get to talk to you and to know you a little bit better.
Yes, thank you for having me and um let's do it again.